Motion to approve the agenda.
Mr. President, I move that we approve the agenda with the following amendments. Additional certified and classified personnel actions for consideration, item number E3. Add item number E5G, consider approval to accept grant funds from the Kansas State Department of Education for Big Brothers, Big Sisters of many county counties for the purpose of carrying out the approved 21st Century Learning Community Learning Center program. Add item number E5H, consider approval of new board policy, GAAF, Emergency Safety Interventions, and revisions to board policy, KGD, crowd control at school-sponsored activities, which is now disruptive acts at school or school activities. Remove item number F1, computer lab electrical upgrade at Horace Goodell School from unfinished business F, and add as item number G3 under new business. Remove the word draft from its item number F2, after-five-year strategic plan.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Close. No public comment? This time, I'd like to recognize the question.
We have a shareholder seats here this evening for transportation. We have one more on the way. Want to go on without it or we can take it to... Would you like to come back to this?
Okay. Jump to a motion to approve the consent.
Mr. President, I move we approve the agenda as presented.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Close. Thank you. At this time, we'd like to start the process of signing up for various Board of Education committee assignments. So we start by passing a sheet around. Joanne sent out an email with the committees that you had signed up for last year. I guess I jumped in. Sorry. I'm finished business then.
What we have before you is a five-year strategic plan. At your last meeting, we presented to you the third board initiative, Efficiency, Safety, and Infrastructure. And you recommended changes. Made those changes, and you asked us to make, and they are now in the document. On Friday, you saw a change, a little bit of a change in format of the document. It looks something like this. Actually, it looks exactly like this. And the reason for the change in format is so that we can get the departments listed there, as well as the years of where we can log the continuous improvement that we're making with each goal and sub-goal as determined by the Board of Education. With this said, I'm recommending that the Board consider approving the five-year district strategic plan as presented. Any discussion this evening?
I just have one question on... I think it ended up being worded this way. It had to do with buildings. Dr. Boland, you remember we talked about, oh, I think it's seven-two. Evaluate elementary, intermediate, middle school curations to determine if reorganization would lead to increased student achievement and efficiency and determine the most appropriate first schools at each level. That's very well that, but that served the purpose of what we discussed. Okay.
Any other questions about grade?
I don't have a question, but I did have one on it. I really like the way that this new five-year strategic plan looks forward in a really broad way and really sets us up for making some long-range goals. I think it is very broad, and it covers a lot of different areas that we look at. And I think this will be a really successful way for us to kind of move the district forward. So I'm really pleased with it, and I appreciate all the work that major staff have done with this.
Anything else? I'd like to echo what Jean said. I think this document gives us opportunity to take a very strategic look at the future and make our plans accordingly. And as we've discussed, it will allow various buildings and other departments to set their goals about how they have to work within the district in the future.
Our goal is to demonstrate to the Board continuous improvement. And the Board to determine whether we have or have not met that goal during the course of the years. We will report to you in a final year. And looking at the answer mine, we're looking at a way to post these narratives. Once the Board approved them, we'll be looking to post these narratives of continuous improvement on our district website, which will be consistent with what's called improved communication. So our goal is to make this a legal document and a legal document of continuous improvement.
Do you want to entertain a motion?
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to accept the five-year strategic plan as presented.
More seconds. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Close. Thank you. At this time, we need to have this further discussion of the budget.
Last, I gave you a two-piece document relating to construction funds that was not included in your budget package from last meeting. Brief summary of that is, as of the end of last full year, we had about nine-hundred-and-sixty, excuse me, nine-hundred-and-forty thousand dollars remaining funds from the bond issue. We have identified close to seven-hundred-thousand dollars worth of items that will be expended over the next year. And those are only the items that we actually have dollars to. We have a few more items that we have not been able, have not put a price tag to yet. So what we are anticipating is that the end of next year, and it's in the next full year, there will be no more remaining bond funds that will have all been utilized. Any questions related to that piece that we weren't able to discuss last night?
Any questions for KJ? Any questions?
If you come up with any, just feel free to contact me, and I'll pick your response on those. How, after you've had some time to look at the budget that we discussed very briefly last meeting, do you have any further questions on those items that we discussed or things that you read in your materials?
Anybody have any questions? KJ regarding the budget, here.
Okay, based on that, I would just add a comment that I understand that raising the mil levy is a difficult thing to do, and not anything that any of us ever want to do. I would just add that with the proposed increase of .79 mil, even if we make that increase, we are still behind the state average from last year, which I can only assume that the state average will go up this current year. So as much as we don't want to do it, we're still using our funds very responsibly in what we are able to achieve with what we are doing and the taxes that we are collecting. So if there's no other questions, I would just ask that we have your approval to go ahead and publish the notice of hearing.
Anybody have any further questions? Okay. Would you entertain a motion to approve the budget as presented for publication?
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to approve the budget presented for the year of 2013, 2014 as presented.
Second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Close. Thank you. Michelle, you got everybody?
And this year, we took three drivers to district and state safety competition, or what we call bus rodeo. Our district competition was in Holcombe, and our state competition was at Hutchinson. I have Melanie Turner with me, and at the state level, she took fifth place. And we have Deborah Brungart, who took ninth. Thank you. And Justin Guerrero. Six, that's it.
And what is, I mean, what do y'all do? I don't want to rodeo, I don't know what it is.
It's a different task.
They, the first thing they do is a written test. They have different questions about anything to do with busing. And then they have a defect bus at the state level. They get six minutes to find six defects, so it's basically doing a pre-trip inspection of the bus. They have a surprise test. This year was something about tires. You guys want to tell them?
Tire pressure.
They had a set of duels there, and you had to tell which one had twenty pounds less of tire, of air in the tire than the other. And then they do a driving competition, which consists of different obstacles. They have a backup course and diminishing clearance. They have to drive through tennis balls. They take their back duels and go between two, there's two tennis balls, and they have, what, eight sets? And they have to bring their duels in between them, where there's about, what's it, a quarter inch on each side that's left, and they have to go through without hitting the tennis balls. And they have a section for student load, right-hand turn, make sure that they're turning, their tires have to cover a certain place, and they can't run over the curb. Railroad crossings. An off-street alley? Oh, yes, parallel parking.
Not like the TV commercial where you open the door, and somebody drives by and takes it off.
And a curb line. Oh, and curb line. Curb line where they, they have to pull up and have their front tires and back tires within so many inches of the curb without hitting anything.
And so no last showing of side gears or anything like that?
Well, sometimes, to stop.
What would be the hardest task?
I would say road curb parking.
I agree.
What about you, Deborah?
Mine was the blind alley. The backup alley, yeah.
So...
And what's hard to do in passing? Fail.
What? I mean, you may have said really tall number state.
We went to Hutchinson.
How long of each have you been driving?
I'm going eight years.
Six for me.
About four, four and a half.
And how many bus drivers are there total?
Thirty-eight. And these are the three that go and compete. We try to get more, but we haven't convinced them yet.
Well, maybe next year, since you guys did so well.
Oh, and this year, they had a, they had a special needs rodeo. Because this is the second year. We went and participated as judges, so that we could kind of get an idea of what it was about. And Justin and Deborah did some role play as special needs kids. That was entertaining. They have different things for that one, for the pre-trip section. They have to do a wheelchair hook-up, where they put it on the lift, bring it up, hook them up, the whole nine yards. And then they have a, instead of car seats, they use what they call a five-star seat, and they have to come on and install that and get it hooked up properly. And then they had fake kids, dolls that somebody had made, and they had to put the child in, make sure that it was strapped in properly. Then they have a driving course, and during the driving course of it, they have these guys on doing different characters. Some of them were autistic, some of them couldn't hear, couldn't see. There was one girl that was...
OCD?
Yeah, OCD. So she was wanting to clean everything all the time, and somebody got sick on the bus, and then she didn't want to go past it, so she was crawling over the seats. And it was, it was a different experience for us. It was very interesting. So we'd like to get some people maybe involved in that and go back for that next year as well. And Melanie and Deborah both drive wheelchair routes for us here in the district, so the written test was difficult. They send it to you ahead of time, and it's kind of an open book, but it's, it was pretty complicated. They had some pretty interesting questions on there, things we couldn't find the answers for. So... Was there anything else on the special needs one? They had the wheelchair, the car seat.
Yeah, evacuation.
Oh, and then they did an evacuation. I didn't get to see that part of it, but...
How many, how many drivers?
They had a total of sixty-two this year. I think it was sixty-two this year.
And that's narrowed down from the district to the state.
Yeah, the top five, the top five from district.
Top three in district.
Top three from district can go to state, or they, they get awards while they're at state, and they're recognized, and that for district. But anybody that goes to district and competes can then move on to the state level. And then the top, the top driver for each section, because they have rookie and experienced, and then they have many buses, conventional buses, which are the ones with the noses on them, and transits, which are like what we have most of, the flat face. And the top person from every level of that can move on to nationals.
Well, thanks for keeping our kids safe while you transport them around. That's awesome. Appreciate what you do for us. I'd just like to say, I think you all do a great job every day. As Gloria said, keep our kids safe. And I think the competition is wonderful, but I bet it's not, it doesn't touch what you do on a daily basis. I think when you have a car, a bus full of kids, it's a whole different ballgame there. So thank you all very much, and congratulations on doing so well. Thank you.
Roy's winning it.
Congratulations.
I think you should strap a wall.
Duck tape on some mouths.
Yeah, I know. That's what I have drivers want. There's a lot of warnings during the course of the year that the weather doesn't cooperate with us, and we don't know what's going to happen. Sometimes I make a good call, and sometimes I make not such a good call. Wish I had a crystal ball. But at no time does the Transportation Department ever bother. They step up, even in those iffy days, they get on those buses, they pick up our kids, and they get them home safe. It doesn't happen by accident. These three are just an example of exemplary drivers that are dedicated to the service of our kids, many of our kids. These are the first people they see in the morning and the last ones they see in the evening. They have one of the toughest jobs in the district. It's the only job we have that we ask the employee to turn their back on our kids. And they do a wonderful job of building relationships with our kids as well. I follow our buses frequently, and overall, I, I very rarely can take any time when they don't follow the procedures that are outlined for them. That bus stops, the kid gets on, the emergency sign goes out, the kids get on, and that bus doesn't move until the kids are seated. That happens over and over again. And their schedule, you can almost set your watch by, they're on time. So our kids don't have to stand out there in the freezing temperatures very long at all before they get on their buses. So thank you. Please pass along to the other thirty-five that are not here this evening, how much we appreciate what they do for our kids and our community.
Thank you, Michelle. Okay, now, we want to award the association committee. We've got a sheet going around with the committees that we need representation on please. We can't have two, three members on any of the committees, so please take a look at the sheet. As I said, Joanne mailed out, or emailed out, the list, we were all nice to it. Would like to take a look at that.
Just a question, Tom. On program budget, the one meeting that's several hours long, that's, we all participate in that, don't we? Do we want to have a specific sign up for that, or just assume that everybody's going to be there?
I always recommend that all the board attend that.
It's an open meeting, so...
Declare it as a special meeting.
So just a reminder from the list.
Also ask Joanne to send out the upcoming Kansas Association of School Board meetings. A couple of them I'd like to make the mention of. The first one coming up is on August 7th in Pecan, is the Board Leadership Workshop. If you have any interest in a leadership position on the Board, I would encourage you to attend this meeting if you can. I have attended it three times now, I believe, and I always pick up something new. And probably as big a benefit as what they talk about is the opportunity to visit with other Board members from other districts and to hear some of their issues and ideas that they deal with. Again, that's August 7th in Pecan. Then coming up, September 24th through October 10th are going to be the Fall Regional Meetings. They have not determined the locations yet. We'll get that information to you as soon as we can. And the Annual Convention is December 6th through the 8th, and that is going to be in Wichita this year. And again, I would encourage you all to attend if we can. There's a wide variety of subjects covered during the breakouts, and if we have a large group, we can just get to more of those breakouts and get more firsthand information through back to the Board. JSD, General Relations will be in February. Jean, I would hope that you can continue to represent us as well as you've done there. That's an excellent way for us to get firsthand information on what our legislators are thinking. Then the National Association of School Board this year, their annual conference is April 5th through 7th, and it's going to be in Dawlins.
Say that again, where is it?
Dawlins. Dad lived up there.
I love it.
I'm not pronouncing. And I would like anybody that's interested to let us know if you will attend. When is it, Joanne, that it opens?
In November.
November?
Yeah, I know April's a long time away, but to open registration in November, again, if you're interested, we really need to know then so we can get as close to the convention site as possible. Because it's about ten thousand people.
You know what? I am planning on attending, and if anybody else is interested, please talk with Dr. Ethan, Joanne, and so we can make sure, as he said, we can get into the host hotel. And because Mom and Dad live down there, I do know some good Cajun food places.
I'd just like to add that the Leadership Workshop is a pretty neat process to participate in, and the networking opportunities are pretty fabulous as well. And I've been once, I plan to go again, as long as someone else wants to go. I strongly recommend attendance if you haven't been before, or if you have. I'm for sure be at the Annual Convention. I'm not sure about the Fall meetings, it would depend on the dates.
And I want to throw out a couple, some more dates to consider for Fall Board Retreat. Off-lundy's would be September 16th, September 30th, and October 14th, or possibly Saturday, September 21st. And no, there isn't a conflict with the case study game, I checked that already. One thing I'd like to do, and need to credit Jean for this idea, is an educational forum, and I'd like to include that as part of our Board Retreat. Basically, our goal would be one that obviously give more information out to our public about what's going on in education, not only with finances, but everything else, but also try and get a better understanding of the common core. And how that is an excellent, excellent thing for our kids, making them career and college ready. So please take a look at those dates, and then get back to myself or Joanne, and let us know kind of what works. I'd like to get something on everybody's calendar by the next meeting so we can plan for it.
Is it also possible for us to maybe check with the RMO level political representatives to see what things like...
That's an excellent idea, because I very much want to invite them to attend.
Because I think maybe we would be able to accommodate some of their scheduling.
I'd be happy to do that.
I'd be happy to do that.
Let's see if any of these four days are working their schedules. Any other questions or dates? At this time, we want to consider, do you have a lab, like to pull up data?
Mr. President, I'd like to excuse myself.
I'd like to get any comments, or is recommended approval as presented? Uh, give motion.
We'll do it in next weekend's budget.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those favorite, please, okay? Opposed? Dr. Hopkins brought up tomorrow, Governor Mishkin. He will be in town over at the college at two P M. Encourage anybody who's available to attend.
I asked one of the trustees from the college if he knew, if, we don't know if he's going to be, how much he was going to be speaking, or if he's just, it's more of a presentation. And what I understand, it's probably just going to be mostly a presentation, maybe a few words, but not a lot of discussion of page level education. But I never know. So, if anybody has an opportunity to go, like, to represent us, I'm, I'm, I'm excited.
I will be there. James Morales will be there. James will say a few words on behalf of the high school. I believe we have twenty-seven students that receive certificate with seven or twenty-eight. Derek Dennis will be there, representing the district as well. Senate Bill one fifty-five is something that the governor supported and carried the banner for, and which is career education. And one of the initiatives that the governor, that I can fully support. Just a great idea and one that should be in mind with. And it really does parallel the Common Core standards. So, might be a talking point that in the future, as we talk to our legislators, that Senate Bill one fifty-five and the Common Core do somewhat help in it. Would you agree?
I just would like to say that this is really, a really positive thing for our district. We're one of just three that are being presented tomorrow. There's Hayes and Little and Garden, so it's not like every district gets this. And this Career and Technical Education Act pays for the Kansas high school students who take qualified technical courses offered by our community and technical college. So it benefits the college too, because they get some involvement. And then if we are able to graduate students with these credentials in technical and career-type education, we get a thousand dollars per student. So, this is, to me, a win-win for everybody. It's a win for the college, a win for the district, a win for the students, and a win for the community. And I, I plan to be there just to show my support for this and to, this is the kind of program to be, to help us provide for all of these, the different needs for all these students. So, I think it's great. And I like the direction that the money is coming.
That's a good thing.
Yeah.
I think Allison is going to try to attend, is anyone else?
How many will you, if you could meet me at one thirty in Dr. Slender's office area? I will let Dr. Slender know that I'd invite you to be there, and whatever it is you'd like to attend, it will be a kind of a special time that we also should get to know.
Good photo ops.
Also, a note, Chamber of Banking is coming up on August first, and I still, it puts us hard time.
Thirty doors open, man, it's a six.
Chamber of Banking starts at six. We have tickets available, we have two tables available. If you're interested in attending, please, I'll put Joanne, if she may, if you want to listen, do you choose a ticket?
I have copies of the, so, like, if I can slip more to your table, it's the worst if you got some, that I'd like to purchase.
And I'd like to note that Joanne put a loving back card in front of us, and first date is next Monday. Principals and secretaries. School year is upon us, kids.
Got the personnel to rock and roll with?
We're getting close.
Awesome. Good job.
Your mother's there, work down, down, August twelfth. Any other comments tonight?
You, you repeat those dates for the retreat or have Joanne, and I don't have a calendar, and I can write them. You'll send them out.
That'd be great.
All right.
Can I actually ask, do you guys know, when you explained, talked about the concealed carry policy? Is that going to be made at the next board meeting? Was it approved?
It was proven, it was presented.
Oh, okay. Sorry, I didn't see it in there. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Next board meeting, will take place Monday, August twelfth. First day of school, Thursday. Monday, August twelfth at six o'clock, here in the board meeting. And a motion for adjournment. Do you mind if I were to discuss it? All those who have a favorite?